Hi, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz and this is Ward Talk. On Ward Talk, we discuss the problems and solutions of the city of Ann Arbor with our guest speakers, the members of the council. Today, from Ward Five, we're speaking with Ali Ramlawi. Hello there. It's good to see you again.
Hi Bonnie, and hi, virtual world.
Yes, and I'm getting to see everybody's living rooms and backgrounds. And I'm still here in the studio, behind the fireplace, nice and cozy. So let's just talk about Ward Five first. I understand Ward Five doesn't have as much development going on as some of the other wards. But if you could just quickly tell us a few things about Ward Five, what's happening with Ward Five?
Well, thanks Bonnie, and I appreciate coming in and speaking to you about these topics. It's been a while since we last together. Ward Five is, you know, is a very engaged ward. It's a ward that has the biggest voter turnout. So it's very in tune to issues, both locally and nationally. But war specific, we, as you said, we don't have the intensive development. Much of our area in this ward has been developed already. But we are conscientious of the impacts of development that it has on our natural world and in our physical world here. And when it comes to things like A20, when it comes to solid waste, these are issues that are front and center these days, that, you know, us in Ward Five are paying close attention to. And including that, we are, have a citywide initiative, unaffordable housing. And there's some properties within Ward Five that will be affected by that type of development.
Now, I understand that your ward has, is more affected by the Gelman Plume problem than some of the other wards. So, and I know it's been a very, very long road to trying to get the area cleaned up. And it's a very slow process, but what's the latest news on that?
Well, thanks for bringing that up. It is a, you know, regional issue. There are multi-government jurisdictions involved in the courts, trying to get a more effective, more speedier cleanup of the dioxin that is in the ground that's threatening our drinking water. And the problem is, for us in Ward Five, it's beneath us. And in fact, it's been detected, you know, in samplings from West Park, Waterworks Park. We developed a program in the city last year to have people's basements tested for groundwater that may be coming in, especially this time of the year, in the thaw, in the spring, where groundwater will enter some basements. And folks are very concerned about vapor intrusion, the inhalation of dioxin. It's a carcinogen. And it's no longer a distant threat. It's upon us, it's immediate. And it's in, you know, the Allen Creek. And it's not going away. And we don't believe it's being properly addressed. Myself was one of the cosponsors to petition, having our city administrator send a letter of concurrence to our governor, the state of Michigan, to ask the EPA for assistance in the cleanup efforts. We feel that the polluter has got deeper pockets than the municipalities at this point to, you know, kick the can down the road, do as little as they can possibly do, and meet the minimum requirements.
And from what I recall, it seems that over the years, that one of the big complaints is that they're just not doing enough, that they could be doing more. And it's almost like, it's almost like the path of least resistance, you know? We'll do what we have to do only if we have to do it. So that means the city has to really be pushing then.
And not just the city, but the county, and Seale Township, and Ann Arbor Township, the state of Michigan, Eagle, Environmental Regulatory Agency of the state, and the courts. But the technology is there, and we know how it can be removed. But for the polluter, in my opinion, it comes in an arithmetic equation of how little we can shell out and stay in compliance with this. They have the money, they have, in fact, the technology. They, the parent company of Gelman owns technology that cleans dioxin out of the water in Tucson, Arizona. So the same company that has polluted, the parent company at least, that owns Gelman now, owns other companies that has the technology to clean it from the drinking source. So not that we want that, we want to clean it up before it hits Barton Pond, but we feel that, yes, the polluter has the means and the ways and the technology, and the responsibility to clean up this mess. And it's been going on for over 30 years now.
So at what stage, I mean, has the state finally responded with action and decisions? Or are you still waiting for that?
The state will be a part of a meeting that we are going to be having here in the next couple of weeks with all the intervenors. Congresswoman Debbie Dingell has been instrumental in getting everybody organized the last several years, so that we can speak as one voice, with Eagle being present in that process. But Eagle doesn't necessarily represent us as the municipalities there, the enforcement agency that is regulatory by the state of Michigan. And some say that they have not done enough in this, in these last two decades. We are seeking a higher power. We are seeking the federal government's assistance in this. They have much tougher rules and enforcement, and we feel that it's come to that point where the state government no longer can do what needs to be done in the time that it needs to be done.
Okay. Well, we'll keep watching this particular topic. It's not going away for quite a while. In terms of where we're at now with dealing with the pandemic, just a few, just a quick highlight of how the city is dealing with it. This is the month of March, and it looks like vaccinations are now being given out. But I understand, basically, the city is still shut down with the offices being closed. So how is that going for you and the council?
Well, like with everybody, it's been a challenge. We're dealing with on multi facets. You know, we have our personal concerns, our family, our loved ones, our jobs, our businesses, organizations, our institutions. So, but when it comes to the city of Ann Arbor, I think Mr. Crawford's done a remarkable job, keeping things together, keeping the organization functioning, keeping services being delivered uninterrupted, keeping the employees safe, and keeping us in budget. It's been, it's been difficult mentally. But thankfully, we've been able to navigate this in ways where I think we can, we can look back and be thankful and proud of the work that's been done. But the vaccination rollout has been incredibly slow here in Washtenaw County. You know, I feel bad complaining about it, because there are some countries in the world that still haven't had one person vaccinated. And we're complaining about the timeline here in America, but...
So what is, what is the source of the slowdown in terms of, is it a matter of the state not getting enough supply, or does it have to do with the county level?
It all is distributed at the county level. So I think they're doing as good of a job as they can. Rollout has been, has been slower than we had hoped. You know, the problem started all the way at the top with the federal government. Unfortunately, we had no leadership between Election Day and inauguration day. We had a president who thought it was a hoax, thought it would be over by Easter, and didn't take the job and the responsibilities of being president serious. And we're paying a big price here, all of us, on many different levels. But I think we're turning the corner, and hopefully, we'll see vaccinations be distributed in a much rapid, much more rapid pace. I mean, we're at over 2 million shots a day here in America right now. So I definitely do see some hope and light at the end of the tunnel. But I think the month of April and May will be the time where we see the biggest impact in that. And hopefully, come June, we're in much safer conditions.
Right. And just, just to add, I see that if things go well with the pandemic becoming less and less of a concern, the city, the art fair planned for July is right now on schedule, although it could change. But that's one thing that I'm looking forward to, if, if everything goes well with, with the improvement of the health conditions, that we can have the July art fair. So I'm looking forward to that. When we come back from our little break, there are several other subjects that I would love to have some updates from you. So I'll see you in a few minutes.
Sounds good.
Okay. This is Bonnie Gabowitz. We're going to be taking a break. Meanwhile, if you are interested in connecting with us, you can send an email to us at ctn@a2gov.org/attentionwardtalk. Or you can follow us on Twitter at twitter.com/ctnannarbor. We'll be right back. Hello, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz. This is Ward Talk, and we are, we're having the pleasure of speaking from Ward Five. Ali Ramlawi. Ali, we were just talking about your Ward Five, as well as some issues with the city. We have so much to talk about, so let's just start with some things that I haven't discussed in a while. And one of the issues was the sidewalk millage and policing. So let's start with the sidewalk millage. I know the city has done a great deal to try to make the streets and sidewalks safer for walkers, drivers, and cyclists. So how is the sidewalk millage helping with the improvement of safety?
Well, thanks Bonnie. You know, my first two years of council, we spent a whole lot of time discussing sidewalks and the assessments associated with them, especially when it came to capital improvement projects that would trigger the complete streets policy, in the sense that, since we're putting in a new sewer line, or we're putting in some other infrastructure improvements, we should put in this sidewalk that is, that is missing, that there's, that there's no connectivity. And when we were doing this, we would assess the property owner where that sidewalk was going in, the part of the cost of installing the sidewalk, which for many folks, it ranged from anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000 a property, to I saw one assessment for $50,000. And the arguments would, would be familiar with all these. The community, by and large, would want them, but the people who were being assessed, you know, up to $10,000 for sidewalks, in many cases, felt that the benefit for the greater good was being disproportionately placed on the few homeowners that were affected with the installation of these. So what we were able to do is, we were able to put language on the ballot, asking for folks to be generous enough to approve a .2 mil increase for five years to fund the side, to fund the portion that would normally come from the residents to address these sidewalk gaps.
So how much money are we talking about in terms of...
We're talking, each year, a little over $1 million. So for the five years, it's about $6 million that'll be raised to pay for this. And, you know, so we can now move ahead, and there'll still be opportunity for residents to have some input on saving some, some trees, or other things that may affect the installation and the property owner. But they will not have to be hit with these large assessments, and we won't get the pushback we get so often, that may result in those installations not occurring.
Okay. So I would think many residents would be relieved by that. So this is a five-year millage?
Correct.
Okay. And then after that, is there a possibility it could be renewed through another vote?
Yeah, just like a road millage gets renewed every four to five years. And in fact, the sidewalk millage is going to give some relief to our street and bridge millage, because we were taking a little bit of money from that fund for sidewalk installations as well. So there will be a nominal benefit to that fund balance as well. So it's a...
Well, that's good news.
Yeah. It fixed the... Yeah, so more money for our infrastructure is always good, and I appreciate the support by the, by the voters of Ann Arbor.
Great. Now, switching over to another topic, what is happening with the, I understand there's a commission that deals with how the police interact with the community. And there's always a way of looking at how the police force can improve. What are the basic changes that you see happening in terms of where this is going, or what, what their goals are?
Well, I sit on, I'm one of the two council members who's the liaison, the Police Oversight Commission, as well as council member Sung from Ward Two. We are non-voting members to that commission. The commission is set up to help with the relationship between the public and the police department, investigate complaints that are made against the police department, whether they're made through the police department or through the commission itself. In response to a roster death about six years ago, and the community wanted more oversight of the police and their actions and the policies that govern our department. So where it's going, it's collective effort. Many different folks have interests. And, but I think the consensus is that the, the police have now become the catch-all for everything. And we've eliminated a lot of the other social programs that were once in place to help folks who needed something else than an armed response.
Especially the social work aspect, in dealing with a lot of issues. It starts out with maybe a police call, but it ends up being a social work problem or a health problem.
And we don't have the type of problems we have here, and I want to be careful, because there are still problems that we have here. But in other parts of our country, a call to the police for help might end up that person who needs help being killed. We've seen this many times, where mentally health, mental health episodes that are responded by the police result in tragedy. They're not trained to interact as well as others could and would. So the direction we would like to go is finding programs and funding them to have responses to these incidences by professionals that are not armed. But trying to do that right now with the community, with the county dispatch and the community mental health, trying to find who we partner up with, how do we do this in a cohesive and effective way? But, but that's where the direction is going. It's to take the resources, because, to be honest, the police have asked for help. They don't want to be the catch-all. They, they are just saddled with all this responsibility, and some of it needs to be put in another person's hands in jurisdiction.
Okay. Now, I know there's been some consideration of limiting the short-term rentals. This is also an ongoing topic, but I know you in particular had spoken up about not quite throwing everything out and limiting, totally limiting the short-term rental. So what is your stand on that now, and where are we at with consideration of changes?
Well, thanks for bringing that up. It's been something that's been discussed for nearly two years, and I joined council. Affordable housing was the biggest topic, and still, and still is. The, the idea of short-term rentals came to mind when, when you have investors who purchase, you know, housing stock in single-family zoning to be used for a business purpose. We are taking away housing from ordinary folk who would like to live in our community year-round. So we address this, this issue by prohibiting the investor-type short-term rentals from areas of single-family zoning. The ones in mixed zoning areas are allowed to continue. Rentals for 31 days or more are allowed to continue. And property that the owner lives in are allowed to continue, even if the owner leaves during that time that it's being rented. If they're claiming homestead on that property, they can continue to rent it in those areas. The concern came from those folks that were caught with those properties at the time of adopting this ordinance. And the idea was, back in September of last year, is to give these investors six months to get their houses in order, in order for this rule to go into effect March 1st. Well, between September of last year and March 1st of this year, we have a new council. The new council wanted to take another look at this and do something to help those folks in, that were caught with these investor-type properties in single-family zoning. But the conundrum right now is, not only would we be grandfathering those owners in, we'd be grandfathering in those properties. So those properties would, in perpetuity, be kept as available for investment-type short-term rentals in single-family zoning. So it is a, is kind of a mess right now. There isn't a very clear direction as to where council's going to go with it. We are right now trying to get the information to find out how many of these actually exist. So staff right now has notified the rental properties to let them know they have to respond back within 30 days to qualify in a possible grandfathering in of those properties. But what, but what, again, continues to be the problem is, once those owners sell their property, those rights continue to be owned by that property.
Let me get a clarification. When you say it must be grandfathered, is that some kind of state or federal law that it must be continued to have that status? Or is that something the city council can change?
Well, normally, when you change ordinances, you can't retroactively impose them on, on pre-existing conditions. You can just make sure those ones that come forward conform to them until the property is sold, and then, then the codes need to be, the new codes need to be applied. There's nothing that is going to force us to grandfather this in. This is, this is up to council's discretion, whether they want to grandfather them in or not. But really, the term grandfathering in is problematic for a couple of reasons. One of them is that we are creating a class of properties, we're commoditizing and monetizing this set of properties. So I don't think that's what the council's, you know, desire was. There was, their desire was to help protect these investors in this, this, while this was going on in the middle, but not to create a whole class of, of a commodity of housing stock.
Now, is this a problem that needs some kind of advice from a consulting firm? Or is this just something that the council has to work with?
It's something that the council has to work with, and it's something that the judicial system perhaps needs to weigh in on, because it's quite unclear as to how this could be, would be interpreted by, by, by the courts. So it's a burgeoning industry. The municipalities were slow in responding to it. So this is all kind of new territory.
Okay. And in the minute we have left, this went very fast, just a personal note from you as to how you think the council is doing with all of these major problems, and just your personal take on, on your job?
Well, you know, I've been enjoying what I do. I find great pleasure in it, and I hope that my constituents appreciate the service that they're receiving from me. I think Ann Arbor continues to be a remarkable place. We are challenged with economic segregation, but that's not unique to just Ann Arbor. That's, that's going on throughout the world and in this country. So hopefully, we can do something to address that in a pragmatic way, so we can have more of a mix of folks who live in our bubble. But I look forward to serving the city for the foreseeable future, and I hope to continue to have the support of my constituents and my, and my fellow Ann Arborites.
Well, Ali, I want to thank you for enlightening us on the topics we've discussed. I think it's really important we have in-depth discussion, since some things go slowly and some things go quickly. So it's great to hear from you. Thank you so much.
And thanks again for having me today. It's been a pleasure.
It's been my pleasure too. And thank you for joining us on Ward Talk. If you'd like to connect with us, you can email us at ctn@a2gov.org/attentionwardtalk. And you can also follow us on Twitter at twitter.com/ctnannarbor. I'm Bonnie Gabowitz. I look forward to seeing you next time. I'm Bonnie Gabowitz, I look forward to seeing you next time.